We had some pretty good excuses.
Zip it, just zip it.
Alright, ready for this?
Yep.
Alright, uh, call to order, roll call and establish quorum.
Megan.
Here.
Kayon.
Here.
Courtney. Lanay.
Here.
Marnie. Dustin. Jaycee.
Here.
Consideration, discussion and possible action regarding soccer leagues. Eric.
Um, yeah, so I think we kinda talked about it that it wouldn't be something that we could do in the fall. But um, I think we'll talk a little bit more when we get down to spring sports. I think it has a spring sport in it, so.
Yeah, I think I was the one who was like, we need to leave that on there, but it was because I thought it would, when we were talking about it, we were talking about it in general. And I was like, we wanna do it, but I didn't realize we were talking about it for the spring, so that's the only reason we kept it on there.
You're good.
So.
You get to sit up top today. You get fancy seat. Although, these might be more comfortable.
Alright, number three, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding baseball and softball leagues.
So yeah, this is kinda something that was left on there since August. Just to update, the leagues did not work out, we only had about seven people sign up for baseball and about eight sign up for softball. So, we were hoping we'd have enough for softball. Where we could at least put a team into SASA or something, but unfortunately it did not work out, and so we ended up refunding all the people that signed up for those leagues.
Um, I don't know if this would fall in there, but how, did we reach out, do we have any contacts with like the Guthrie League or Cushing or anybody?
Um, I've talked to, I've called Cushing multiple times, um, I keep getting his assistant or something and she keeps uh, saying, oh yeah, he'll get back to you, he'll get back to you, so hopefully one of these days I just kinda get ahold of him directly. But I'll keep trying to do that, um, that'd be kinda for the spring. Kinda falls into the next group, I believe, with the spring sports, but that's what we're looking at for the spring.
Um, does this include T-ball?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did we, have we ordered any like, medals?
Yes.
All that stuff?
I actually just picked up those today.
Perfect.
So we have the medals, we had, we um, with T-ball as well, we had jerseys, we had a total of seventy-three players total. Um, each team having about fifteen kids. Probably will shorten that down for the spring, cause that was a few too many, but a lot of fun and um, sounds, seems like most of the kids are having fun when I'm out there, I know some of you guys have worked concession stands and um, can kinda see that as well, where the kids seem to be having some fun out there.
Number four, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding spring sports leagues.
My thing would probably just be kinda, I would say, consideration and discussion, I think we wanna do the leagues, it's just in the spring, I would say, do soccer. Um, I wish I would've kind of that form off for you guys, I found a form of how things used to be. Um, and it looked like soccer was about February to mid-March, and then baseball would start up after that as well, so I would like to suggest that that's, maybe the schedule we go with is soccer early and then baseball, T-ball, softball after that.
I think that sounds, well, it was pretty darn cold when we did that.
Maybe start late February.
But, I mean. Yeah, that's what I would say, like I remember, like one of the last years that we did soccer, like it was like rigid, so.
Well, I remember February getting snows.
Well, and if we, if we were to push it back a little bit, it was starting to interfere, is there a way that we could set up like a, I'm not a soccer person, but set up like a soccer field or something that, for games to be on, like out there at Peters Park, like out in the open area?
I don't see why we couldn't just do it in the open area, the only nice thing would be maybe having the stands, but I, I would probably prefer the open area anyway, cause I know that outfield's a little bit uneven.
So, make a note of that, I like that idea better, cause that way parents, when I've gotta watch soccer games, like you have parents that are sitting like outfield side, and then you have parents that are, some are in the stands, but then some are against the fence and chairs, um, so just seems like it might be, or if we could have one central location.
Yeah, I think that would probably, eh, we have a nice open area down there by, kinda in the middle of the disc golf, so that would be the only thing we'd have to worry about, is does that interfere with the disc golf too much?
Before we move on, um, I know we're still talking about spring sports, but I know we previously, previously discussed adult league, or just fun league or something. Are we still gonna hit with that, like pickleball or, or softball for adults? I know we talked about it.
Yeah, I think that would fall into the spring, I was, I was thinking we had an adult thing on there, that's why I was trying to look for it, but I guess I did not get that on there, I think, yeah, it would be um, I think it would be a good idea to do something in the spring, as like either a fall, that's, sorry, a spring softball league for adults that we could do. And honestly with that, you could do it later at night too, so the adults can get their kids to bed and then go play softball. I've seen that work a lot better than trying to have them manage their kids running around while trying to hit a softball. Cause a lot of times they'll get distracted and kinda be like, oh, we uh, sorry, I gotta go grab my kid real quick, he's running down the other direction, so.
With that, we may, even with baseball and softball too, we may wanna reach out to the tribe and see if they would partner with us or something and let us use their fields as well, like in tournaments or something.
Yep, so, I think that's good, you have that written down.
Regarding all the sports, um, I was approached by a few parents, one childcare facility my kids go to and also at the concession. Are you going to hire a photographer for like the team pictures?
I think for the spring, yes.
What about this fall?
I've talked to some of the coaches, I think just how fast it came up on us, we weren't able to hire a photographer. So I have talked to the coaches, that you guys might just have to do your own kinda team photo this year. But I do believe for the spring, we can definitely get someone found and get actual photographer set up.
Well, if this'll fall underneath it, I would suggest we use Justin Reedie.
Yes, I second. He's pretty cheap, really cheap.
He's a dad, got kids and every, on, at every campus right now in Perkins. Um, but he does professional photography and he takes the high school pictures, like at the games and stuff.
He takes the Little League football pictures and baseball pictures too, so.
For sure, for sure.
I'm sorry, what was the name?
Justin Reedie, R-E-E-D-Y.
Love his pictures.
Does anybody have, like, you guys know him, but does anybody actually like have his contact information? Okay, that is everybody. But just that sometime after the meeting, if you don't mind sending the contact information or even talking to him about that possibility.
Yeah.
Best way to go on that. Cause I don't know who that is.
He's also somebody that may have the availability to actually get it done before the end of the league too.
Yeah.
He kinda does on a whim.
Okay.
Like, we just scheduled cheer pictures last week for tomorrow, so he may be able to, we may, we ask him if we want to mess with it, if not then, I'd wait till the spring, but it'd be worth it, ask him.
I think that's something, if you guys can just send me his contact information and we can see if it's a possibility, so. Um, any more that good right now for spring, I think we'll leave spring sports definitely on there. Cause it will probably be something we have to discuss till we get up to the point of we're actually doing it.
Alright, everybody good with that? Alright, number five, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding movie in the park event. Eric.
Um, I haven't done too much on this one, cause we need to try to figure out, is there a date that we wanna do it? I would suggest at this point in time, probably doing it in the spring, um, sometime when it's nice outside. Or even maybe thinking about doing it next summer on like a nice night or something like that. Cause I know we don't really have too much in the way of events, from what I've seen of, the schedules and stuff that I've seen from the old Parks and Rec directors on their flash drives and stuff that I have, um, there really isn't much in this, so it could be some type of event that we set up in the summer. I think that's something, um, I think that's something that I would say we maybe just leave on the agenda and kinda figure out what we wanna do. Cause I know a lot of, a lot of places do that movie in the park thing in the summer. Kinda just as like a big summer event, they might do other things as well that we could add to it.
I think October's kinda the latest you can do it, really, and know that you're gonna be okay.
That, but I, I know we call it movie in the park, but I mean, what is, I don't really know, is Oak Park big enough to where we could open up that big room that they have? Do it like in, like a winter indoor, it's not movie in the park, but.
That would be something we'd have to talk to Oak Park about, cause they are, they own it, not us. Whereas like in the summer, we can get one of those big, look again, maybe one of those big inflatable screens that the companies, and they'll actually have the projector and all that, and we can go out.
That's before, those big inflatable.
Seeing what type of movie we want, or we could do, we could look at maybe if that's an option too, maybe doing one a, one a quarter, or one season or something, and show a different seasonal type movie for it, so.
I mean, and we, what we did before is we always partnered, like we partnered with a animal shelter here, um, for one, I think Tribe was partnered with another. Um, and we did it at the territorial plaza, which I wouldn't recommend doing, cause it's so crowded, where we work. But partnering with them, like they, it's helping raise money for both Parks and Rec and like the shelter, we was able to raise some money for the anthrax.
Maybe we could talk to Oak Park about doing one, like sometime in the winter and just seeing if they would wanna partner on it, see, because they're doing a lot of events out there right now.
It's just something like, I think, if we, if we don't get it done this winter, I think we need to look at doing like some type of fundraiser like in the winter, because not a whole lot of people hit the winter in town as far as look for fundraising, um.
Yeah, I think it would be something especially, like, and we could even do sponsors or something, and get the, I think we need to get the event rolling. I just, my thought would be maybe the summer would give us enough time to get the amount of sponsors and, and make the decisions on what, I mean, are we just gonna do just a movie, are we gonna do activities, is there gonna be food? I mean, I would suggest doing the uh, consent, doing like a concession stand with popcorn or something like that.
Even if it's just, I think, I know it might be too much, but even if it's just once a quarter, um, it's like an annual event, like once a quarter.
I mean, I still think that for spring, I think it would be amazing to set it up in one of the T-ball fields, have concession stand and play Sandlot, I mean, that'd be our movie choice.
Maybe like do it like as a kickoff right before T-ball and stuff.
Oh, that'd be good.
And have folks sign up.
Sort of like a spring ball kickoff or something.
Yeah, and I think that would give us enough time to plan it too.
If we did, like.
We have been kinda short planning on some stuff and having to rush it, so I think that would be its time to.
But yeah, we could do, like she was just saying, we could do that and have like a table for signups there, like people could sign up while they were there. Like, kinda kill some birds with one. One stone, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that or not.
It's definitely something, since we're doing this meeting once a month, that we just need to figure out the date. Do, and I like the idea of Sandlot or Angels in the Outfield or some type of baseball, baseball movie. Kids will enjoy it, a lot of adults that saw it, were younger would probably love to enjoy watching it again. And kinda get everybody ready for baseball, softball, T-ball season, so.
Alright, everybody good with that? Alright, number six, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding sports equipment exchange. Eric.
Um, so I guess my thing on this is, do we wanna do an event, or I've had people drop off some stuff here and there. Would it be better just to kinda keep that stuff and hand it out to the people that need it, like especially if a coach comes back and say, hey, I got this kid whose glove has fifteen holes in it, and they're just trying, but like, do we need to do that, or if we wanna do like an exchange, I would suggest maybe even throwing it in with that movie in the park event, something like where we do it before the season and say, hey, if you have some old gear, or if you've got new kids into T-ball that need some gear and wanna bring your old gear, and just exchange it out, or if you got some old gear you just wanna get rid of, drop it off for some of the newer kids at that, and, I think it would just be one where we would have the event and then they can give it to them, instead of it going through necessarily like to us than to them, cause.
That's kinda what I was gonna say, is I think, I don't think that's a bad event, I would make it maybe not, I would say like donation slash exchange maybe, because you could have parents like bring all their stuff, like kinda like a swap meet or something, you know?
A vibe.
Parents can go swip off, swip off with whatever they want, but then whatever's left over, if they don't want anymore, they can donate it to us, and then that's where we can go in, and I think it needs to be something that needs to be like top of the list on all coaches' meetings for all events, is, as a coach, keep your eye out for this, if you have a player who doesn't have cleats, we've got the stuff that they can use for the season.
I have not had any of my coaches for this fall season come up and ask, most of them said their kids were good, they had gotten gear and all that. The only thing I really had to give out was baseball, or T-balls, because they do need those to play, but other.
I think that's something that the coaches could definitely, it could be something done discreetly and you're not depending on a parent. Their pride or anything.
And you don't run into any like problem, I could see a problem being like, oh, well, I come up and I like Marnie, we're friends. And I don't like Dustin, and I'm gonna give all my stuff to Marnie's kid, because even though Dustin's kid really needs it, and he's already got his kid's stuff, like, I think that would be kind of where maybe they just wanna donate it at that event, we can do it that way, and then have the coaches tell me, hey, I got this kid whose glove looks like his grandpa owned it at one point in time, it's one of those like old fashioned mitts. And it's got fifteen holes in it, they can't even stop a ball with their glove, that we do, help those kids out, cause we do have some gear where we could do that, so.
Make a idea, if we do a flyer for the movie nights in lot, in the park, that we put it on there at the bottom, so parents could know, cause some people might not sign up because of it.
Yeah, I think if we do a movie night, we could also say it's a donation for old gear night as well, and just put all that information on the flyers. And on the social, and on like Facebook and whatnot, so.
Everybody good with that? Alright, number seven, consideration, discussion and possible action to raise money for scholarships.
Um, so what we've been doing on that so far has been all the donations that are going into donation fund, that's what the plan is to use that for. Do we wanna do anything more? We can't technically go fundraising, at least like as the city entity, so it'd be more of probably just going and getting donations in the future to uh, get that gear and then having, kinda going back to the last one where, or if we want people to start, um, I think I've heard Lanay mention it, have people sponsor teams and help pay for their fees into the league as well.
What do you mean, like the donations have, so what donations?
So, we have, we've had a donation box out at the concession stand, that goes into the donation fund. My plan for using that fund, and I think we talked about it last time, would be for scholarships for kids who can't um, afford to play or something like that. I think maybe we'd have to have some type of form to fill out for that, but that's kinda.
I think all of our money should go towards that, or some of the money should go towards some of our events and stuff, since we really don't have a budget for that.
So the events, so the concession profits are going back to the events and stuff, it's the donations that are given.
Just the donation box.
Just the donations that are given, or like if somebody gives donations, um, unless they specifically like, hey, I wanna donate for this specific event. If they're just like, I just wanna donate to wreck Parks and Rec, it will go into that donation fund that we could use for scholarships for uh, kids that can't necessarily afford to play in the leagues.
And did we talk about uh, limiting it, uh, limiting the amount of scholarships being offered?
We have not, I think that is something that, since we're discussing it, we would, we probably would wanna see, do we wanna limit the amount, or how we would wanna go about issuing the amounts, is there a criteria that needs to be met or something like that?
Well, I think it's a little bit hard, I think we definitely need, we definitely need scholarships, cause we want all kids playing.
Yes.
And I also think we, you know, there's potential that we could get some really large, you know, or like some bigger donations and stuff too. So, shh. That could also help us in other areas, so I almost hate to be so specific to say, every donation from the donation box is going to scholarships. Does, do you get what I'm saying? I don't mean that to sound like, I mean, we want there to be scholarships, but what if we get a really big one that overloads that, and we could really use some of that to improve builds or to do improved parks or to do some of those things, I know we're not getting there right now, I just hate to be so specific.
We don't have to, like, we don't specifically have to use the donations for that, I think that's a good cause to use it for.
Yeah.
They are just donations to Parks and Rec that we can use in other places if need be, like if we don't have, if we don't use any of it, we can use it in other places.
Okay, that, okay, that makes sense, I just wanna make sure we weren't saying like.
No, it's only.
It's not, it's not.
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, that donation fund is not a set, like, it's just donations for this, it's a donations fund for the Parks and Rec. We can use it for events and stuff, I would just like to focus on if we have kids that need it.
Absolutely.
Using it for them.
Okay.
And then finding other.
Just to clarify, like, for all other purposes, like outside entities, it's not designated just for that, it's just donation.
It's just a donation.
That's the first place we're going to.
I think that would be a good idea, it'd be the first place to go to, is to help the kids that need it. If there's a lot in it and we don't have, then we can discuss in one of these meetings, like where else would we like to use it? What events or something like that, would we like to use it for, so.
Yep.
Um, and then like, as far as the criteria goes, I feel like that needs to be like case by case, maybe?
That's hard.
It's hard to set like a specific criteria, I feel like on that.
I think that's something too, I, I think I can reach out to some, maybe some other Parks and Rec departments and see what they do. Cause I know other Parks and Rec departments do donation or do scholarships and stuff, see kinda what do they do in that situation.
I really don't know that there was ever a criteria before whenever we were doing, um, it was just.
Yeah, and I, I think it mainly could just be like that, and, but, um, that's something I think, if you guys want, I can research it and see what, what do other leagues and stuff do with donations like that.
I think that would be smart, just so we kind of know like, we should, like, it doesn't mean we have to do what they do, but we can kind of take what they're doing and get fit, yeah.
Yeah, I do think that we should have like a, a maximum number, due to the fact that it is, what about, say, oh, I got a free scholarship, and then we'll conquer dreams really fast. Especially if we having more than one sport at the same time.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
I think that's, that's what I would suggest with the kind of consideration, is I would um, do some research on it and see what some other areas do.
So, what about for like basketball that's coming up, do we wanna say, okay, I think we'll do this many for that? Or just kinda take it case by case for the first time, and then kind of figure out the criteria for the next?
Is there anything, like, is there any records that you've seen so far? I can't think of a single scholarship that we have given, I've been on the board.
I, uh, the kids that we, I don't wanna say their name, but I know, yeah, I know they have gotten them.
Several times.
I don't know if it's a, if people have donated for them to play type scholarship or whatnot, I haven't seen any records on how that's happened, so I think it'd be something before we make it a thing that we do the research on to make sure, see if it, see what some other people, are they doing donations, or they're like, hey, would you wanna donate for this person to play, or are they doing, fund itself?
So how about for basketball, if anyone was to um, reach out and need help, then we can try to find a sponsor for them.
I think that's for now, until we figure out how that money is to be used, maybe look at just doing a sponsor for that kid.
So if you have any, just let me know, I'll help with that.
Okay.
Alright, everybody good? Alright, number eight, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding Peters Park cleanup day.
So this is one, I would say it was carried over from the last meeting, uh, we did go ahead and just do the uh, cleanup day, because we needed to get it ready for the season, it went really well. Um, we had a decent amount of people out there, as well as um, a lot of people that really helped get that fence fixed for T-ball season. Um, so, went really well, people cleaned up the bathrooms and all that, um.
Is that the toilets get fixed in there, cause Wilson said they would donate something?
So one is fixed, and we're trying to find a, one that actually fits the piping that's in there, cause it was done, I won't go, so it needs a really old uh, year.
Okay.
And unfortunately, like the newer ones have different piping that may or may not work, but the toilet in there has been fixed. The one toilet, so it's already in there, so.
Oh, okay.
Action plumbing came down and fixed it yesterday.
Um, the only thing I would say for the cleanup days, I know it's not the specific, but maybe ma, start making a new punch list now that it's starting to slow down, like with T-ball ending or whatever, um, that way we can look at what we're needing to start preparing for, for spring. Funding wise, like start trying to get our stuff built up, that way we can have all ready before spring, spring ball.
Sounds good.
Alright, number nine, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding basketball league.
Okay, so at this point in time, I'll have you guys flip your paper over to um, what comes out of here, but I'd like to thank you for helping make this flyer. This is kinda the flyer we're looking at, doing, um, starting next week with registration for basketball. I have talked to Tyler Pearson, I know he does kinda third grade and up with basketball, so we're looking at maybe doing the pre-K through second age for basketball, which is a little young, but, um, some of the things on this flyer that we put on is possibly bumping up the fee. Can't remember if he told me, somebody had told me that up in Stillwater, I think it was SASA's charging like eighty-five bucks for it, so our fee is quite a bit lower. We're just looking at bumping it up ten dollars, so that would be something I think we'd have to take an action on if we wanted to do. Cause right now, our fees have kinda been at fifty dollars, um, that might've been something I needed to put on a different agenda, that's something I need to put on a different agenda, or.
Uh, I looked at the Y for, um, yeah, it's, I think it was sort of T-ball, and it was like a hundred and fifteen.
If you're not a member. Okay, so that's something we can't necessarily talk about. Okay. So, I've been informed, we cannot talk about raising it at this moment, it's something we have to put on a separate agenda, so we probably still have to stay at the normal rate that we do for basketball, but it's something we can talk about in the spring.
So it needs to stay at fifty?
For basketball, have to, yeah, we'll have to redo this, let's make it stay at fifty, it'd be something to talk about this spring, I have to inform that it's kinda too far off topic. But, basically what we're looking at is doing. But basically what we're looking at is doing those age groups. I've talked with Tyler about it and he's handling kind of the older age groups for now. It might be something we look at to see how many teams there are in the older. Is it something that we take over in the, in the future? So, um, what we're looking at is doing the pre-K and kindergarten Monday nights, um, doing first and second on Thursdays. We're looking at combining those two age groups just by the number of kids I got off of T-ball. I think we would still be able to have enough teams. But at the same time, you're not having a second grader play against a pre-Ker.
This is how we've had it divided up before. It's worked well.
Okay, um, like I said, we have on there looking at doing signups for, starting next week until about the end of the month. Then we have a coaches meeting right at the beginning of November and then let the practices start. I know the, I've talked to the superintendent. I know that in the past he's let him use certain schools to practice as well as. Marty at the Baptist Church also, um, said he's opened his gym for a team to practice. So we could definitely find a practice for that and do the schedule of the practices. As for the registration, um, talked about maybe, maybe, um. I could stay late one or two nights and then if anybody, Courtney had talked to me and said she would volunteer to stay late on Wednesdays to help do. Signups that way for people who work who can't make it to City Hall to do the sign up, um, doing the sign up that way. And we can still do the online sign up if you guys think that it was a little bit kind of hard to manage. And then a way that we could do, um, or we could cut it down and maybe not do it. Maybe just do two or three days a week, not necessarily do four. Um, that's just what's put on here. We're doing credit cards down there. I, we could actually just have them sign into my computer and put their credit card information that way and pay online. And I could show you guys how to do it if somebody wants a volunteer night or something like that where we could. Sit down and you can show them how to get on the computer, fill out the form and so I think that would be beneficial to that, so. What else is on here?
Night through the twenty-seventh, that's what, two, three weeks? I think you could probably cut that down to a couple nights instead of four nights a week for three weeks. That's a lot. I mean, there're gonna be a lot of kids if you're doing that many nights. I think you cut it down.
Alright, probably cut it down to two.
Maybe, uh, like do like Monday, Wednesday, one week and Tuesday, Thursday, the next week or something like that. Just to kind of offset it, offset it. I don't know, but I don't think you have to do four nights a week for three weeks by any means.
Only thing with offsetting it is people might be like, oh, was it Monday, this Monday or this? Whereas if we just do two set nights. It's like, okay, it's these two nights.
Yeah, and if you set it like for two set nights, I mean, I still think we need to do, I think we need to leave online registration open. Just because I'm insanely busy and I know like there are several nights where I get home and it's eleven o'clock and I'm like, oh, that's due today.
Something when I get this out here and I'll probably put it on the flyer that I think will help because we have some issues with the online. Is making sure that you leave your contact information on the email that you send. Because that didn't happen and it took some tracking down of parents to get all the forms filled out or, you know, get the money filled out right. And, yeah, it's all, all over the place, so, yeah. Um, other than that, what do you guys think about our coaches meeting on the second, starting the week of the fifth and then starting the week of the fourth for games? And we'll take a break, um, obviously for like the two weeks of Christmas and New Year and then finish the rest of the games in January.
I think that, I mean, I think it looks good. We do need to keep in consideration though, a lot of your players for first and second grade are still with bandit football right now.
Who does bandit mean?
Bandit does enhance another.
I mean, they'll be, if they make it to playoffs, they'll be in playoffs. We'll be in the beginning of November. So you're looking at middle of November at the earliest.
Maybe start the practices a week after or kind of leave it up to the coaches when they want to get the practices started.
Well, and some could start practicing and if the others couldn't come in till later, then fine. I mean, to be honest with you, like pre-K and kindergarten. Like I know especially like with T-ball, they don't really like practice. So like two weeks is really.
I don't expect.
Couple weeks is probably plenty for them to just learn how to run up and down.
Too much out of their practices.
Yeah, I was saying more for your first and second graders, um, because I know like Thursdays, they have practices Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays.
So my thought would be just let the co- with the coaches and then kind of let, maybe let them, say they can start practicing on the fifth. If they have their team, if they want to start later because they know their team's in bandit or whatever, they start, um.
Yeah, because we could still do signups and they.
Basically, we could just make the fifth as like, that's when your practices can start, are the fifth. They'll start before then, but that's when your practices can start.
And the only thing that I would say we need to add on here that we had just talked about a little bit ago was something about the scholarship is to get it put on the flyer.
Yeah, at the bottom somewhere.
Be added somewhere on there, scholarships available.
Limited amounts.
Well, no, I mean, we talked about for basketball, for a scholarship, if we have someone come up, like. Eric translates that to every one of us, surely all of us can find someone, a business that will sponsor that child.
I agree.
Just for like, for basketball, I think we should do that.
Just kind of put at the bottom.
I like that.
Don't make it too obvious that not everybody's trying to get scholarships because we're not going to find that many business.
No, I think we, if I remember right, on the fall ball. Um, on the fall ball thing, we put like a small little thing like down in the bottom corner.
I'll look at that and see what's on it and it goes there.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, I mean, like we've already said, like, we want all kids that want to play, to be able to play.
Yeah.
So, is everybody good with the flyer? Sorry, I don't know if I'm.
Yeah, can I ask a couple more questions though?
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Um, I would like to suggest that on the shirts, as soon as we have the teams. Then I would like to find a sponsor for the shirts for each team and have just their name on like right there or right there.
She can do that at B four pretty easily, um, which she did good with our shirts, I think.
And that would help us recoup some money and I think.
But also she's going to need those orders as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm gonna probably have to put those orders in in the beginning of November, so we might even. Start saying, seeing if people are willing to sponsor teams.
I think if I had. Honestly, I think in like three days we could find enough easily.
So I'd say maybe by the end of that week of the fifth, we probably know who our sponsors is, so again, the shirts put in. Probably takes her about two weeks or so to do the shirts if she's rushing. I'd like to give her a little bit more time than that. Rush her a little bit on T-ball.
Well, and the thing is she can still print shirts. If we had, we're lacking one, then that could be the last thing she put on something. But I think we could find that pretty quickly. Uh, and if you can let me know, I don't mind to work on that.
Sounds good.
Um, and then do we want to, and, and maybe not, but in T-ball, like we were saying, like fifteens too many. And so whenever we're, like, I do still think we should allow people to, you know, if they want to sign up a team or whatever, but should there be a max per team?
I. Be for basketball, I would say ten tops.
I was gonna say probably about eight for, especially for the little kids, because you're gonna want them, you don't want them sitting off the court too long.
No, the issue with that though is you're gonna have, just from experience of coaching littles at that age, like, you're gonna have the ones that don't want to play. Um, and that gives you a, a chance to swap out the entire five and you're not having to keep up in your head, like, who's come out, who you gotta put in, like, that's a.
For teams to ten, I think that would work fine because that would still, if we could get around the same amount of kids we had for T-ball, that would. Put us at like seven teams with maybe one extra player or seven teams or maybe even do an eight team and shave it down to nine.
It maybe should say something about, um, like if team sign up limit of so many per team or something. Just so that, you know, a team doesn't come with fourteen kids, when we could have really had a whole nother team. Or something like that.
I thought would almost be, especially with the little kids, would you want, would it be better to just do some type of like draft or something like that?
We did that, but when I first joined Parks and Rec and I was the first started coaching, that's what we did.
Yeah.
Like you had an eye, like you had, there was a list, a spreadsheet made of every player's names. Um, like all the coaches came in, they drew a number out of a bowl and that's how you went around. And you were still able to pick your team, like, is you still. Dude, that's okay.
That's gonna happen because you have a lot of kids that people don't know whether they've even played basketball or touched a basketball before. But I think that was kind of, I didn't put it on there, but that's kind of what I would like to go with is a, a draft of sorts. Whereas, I mean, if we have a coach, obviously their team just, their kid goes automatically on their team. That way they're not trying to like, oh, well, I have to coach this game and then I gotta watch my kid play this game. Or I'm playing against my kid while I'm coaching the other team, but after that, just kind of do a draft and. One, I think it's good because, um, I mean, I don't think you'd be stacking kindergarten, baseball team or basketball teams.
I think if we are doing that, you might need to put like all of second grade in one bowl and all of first grade in one bowl and everyone does that way. So you're not ending up with.
That would be my idea is to, when I did that, would be divided by grades and then go through the second graders first, get them on teams. Then go through the first graders, get them on teams. And that way they're pretty well spread out.
I will say once you get to the older kids, they do want to play with their friends and that's why we lost a lot of leagues. Is because you could just go to Stillwater and sign up your whole thing. And I don't think it's bad for the little kids, but once they get a little bit older. That didn't work for us anymore.
And they're still gonna try in first and second grade.
Yeah.
You guys are seeing that with T-ball and stuff, so, but I think the draft is probably gonna be your. It's gonna be a headache on, no matter what you do, but I think that's gonna be a less headache than what you're gonna kind of deal with otherwise.
And I make a suggestion that we relook at the game nights because starting in December, you're gonna start competing with high school basketball. And that's when, I mean, they play on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Or Fridays.
And I know, I'm not.
And junior high and third, sixth grade, that's.
And we have other sports that's going on too, the same day.
Wrestling.
Wrestling is on, um, Thursdays.
So Thursdays is probably a day we need to, Mondays good, pretty much?
Uh, there's, so I think junior high is Mondays.
Junior high is Mondays and Thursdays, high school's Tuesdays, Fridays.
So there's really.
You're not gonna have a better.
You don't have a day to play.
You're just gonna have to pick one and parents are gonna have to figure it out. That's just the way it's a little bit.
Wednesdays.
That's the problem. Wednesdays, then you're gonna get into church.
I think we try to avoid Wednesdays.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with doing.
You're just gonna have to pick a day because you're not gonna make everybody happy. So it's not, that's the type of, it's plain and simple. Everybody's gonna have a kid doing something. Pick a day. Do, I'm not familiar with high school schedules here. Do basketball and wrestling lap on any days or is it mainly just?
No. No, they do not.
No, they don't? So like wrestling's Tuesday, Friday most of the time?
No. No, they. Thursday. Thursday, yeah, Thursdays.
Parvita.
So I know basketball is Tuesdays, Fridays for sure, for high school. And I looked at the middle school schedule earlier today and it looked like it was for sure Mondays and mostly Thursdays. Yeah.
Mondays, Thursdays are junior high. High school is Tuesday, Fridays. And wrestling can sometimes.
It weaves in there.
Depends on. Because sometimes, because sometimes junior high and high school wrestling are together.
Yeah.
So I just remember in high school, like there was nights where cheerleaders had to be split because wrestling was here and basketball was there, like.
Yeah, it looks like a lot of these best, high school basketball is Tuesday, Fridays move on a lot of these.
So that's why it's always been.
You're not gonna have very many parents that have a first and second grader and have a high school basketball player. They, they might want to go watch.
More like junior high. So you may take.
Also, um. Cause I had talked to the superintendent about that and he said he'd get back to me with more information on the courts. I know we use the junior high court. Does the junior high play at the junior high court or do they play up at high school?
Junior high, but didn't we, for these little kids, we've always used the elementary gym?
First and second, I mean, all the way up to second, they use the elementary.
Yeah, I just kind of talked to him and that's, he's like, well, I think you guys use the junior high, but I'll get more information. And that was like a day or two ago.
That was Tyler and them that use the junior high gym.
Okay, so I'll talk to him about the elementary. Um, it was just kind of a, oh, I'll get some information back to you and I think he's kind of busy, so.
So we are keeping the dates and the day, sorry.
I can look at the schedules if you guys want me to, to see if there is, like, if one day's worse than the other, but I feel like we're just gonna. I mean, you got, you, you got junior high basketball, high school basketball, wrestling, you got varsity JV possibly. So you're gonna have junior high, does they, do they have wrestling as well? I mean, we're just gonna run into that conflict no matter, I think, I feel like what day we pick, I think it's a really good idea to bring up, but. It might be one where maybe we look at their schedules and see if maybe one day is better than the others. But I, do you feel like we'll probably need two days to do these games?
Okay, did we talk about, uh, how many days a week are they gonna practice?
That's kind of where my thought is, is leave it up to the coach. You're like, uh. You were mentioning the pre-K and kindergarten, they might be able to practice once a week and focus long enough to practice for thirty minutes for once a week. Whereas like first and second grade, they're, they're gonna be a little bit more into the practices and be able to do that. So I think what we'll do is just create a schedule so that we don't have conflicts in the gyms that were used. And also check with the Baptist Church on what time, because he did offer his gym, but what times are the gyms available?
Kind of put blocks up there where they can fill out and say, hey, we want this time with this time and stuff like that.
What we did, like you have that schedule, like a blank schedule ma- made for the coaches meeting, because that's what we did too, is we did the draft night. But then the coaches also picked what nights worked best for them and then you kind of play with it and if there's conflicts and you kind of work it out with the coaches.
You're probably gonna have, um, the second, I think it's usually the second Thursday. Is usually old fashioned country Christmas in town.
I don't remember what day it was.
I think it's usually the second Thursday. It's probably on their website, but that's gonna be another day you just, or I don't know. So avoid, um, wherever we play, we need to make sure they have goals that can work for a pre-K kindergartner too.
So the superintendent is specifically looking into that for me. And if not, I'm gonna order us some that we can attach to the room and adjust up and down because, um, and we'll get to it on the next page. But for like first and second grade, we want about eight feet, but for pre-K, we might go down to seven. They're gonna have.
Did, when there's some, does Parks and Rec have that we did adjust for the?
Yeah, the portable goals. I just don't remember if they were our goals or if they're Kathy's goals.
I can answer that question. I think she owns them as well as we have one, but we only have one and it is busted up behind Dixon.
Well, she had, last time I was in the gym, she's got two in the gym, in the elementary gym that we, that's what we used. Um, and all you do is you roll them underneath and they sit right in front of the goal itself.
And I do believe the superintendent told me that he was gonna look into that to see if they're still there or what we need to do on that. That's kind of one I'm waiting on him to get back to me on, um, because if they don't have one, we might see if they got places to store them and then buy our own. Or if they're buying some and they'll let us use them, gotta go from there. So the next pages is kind of the rules. I would like to, so USA Basketball doesn't have a guideline for under, under the ages of seven and eight. I think we should just use the similar rules. Um, I'm gonna go through these real. I think we should just use the similar rules. Um, I'm gonna go through these real quick and then if you guys have some questions to ask. So using the small ball at twenty-seven point five, um, for seven and eight, it has the basket listed at, or so for our first and second, ask a B bit at eight foot, um, size of the court, we can't adjust that, so that's just on there. Um, and I just got these off of US Basketball's website. No three point arc, because later we're getting the rules, they don't play threes. Most of the time at that age, you, I've really hardly ever seen a kid that can shoot far enough to hit a three anyway. I'm sure there's some, but very rarely do you run into that and we'll make sure the coaches are aware. Um, doing eight minute quarters, one minute in between. Two minutes, um, if we are gonna do, like if a game's tied, if we're gonna do extra time, two minute extra time. Scoring, free throws, one point. And all other baskets are two. Timeouts, that's something, uh, I think when we can talk with the coaches, see, do we wanna do timeouts or do we wanna do two? They have the suggestion of doing two sixty minute, sorry, sixty second timeout, not sixty minutes, we're not, that's a long timeout. Longing in the game. Alright, um, and then also doing one extra sixty second timeout for any extra periods that have to be played. Unused timeouts do not carry over, so you basically get two and a half. And then the normal figuring out who starts the ball with like, um, it has it. Yeah, it has doing a coin flip instead of a tip off. I think that would be good, because you're gonna kind of keep the kid from butting heads when they try to jump up for the ball for a tip off. So that's kind of what I would think on that. Playing time equal playing time, so like if we do do ten, five on, five off at the end of the quarter, five on for the next quarter, five off, five on, five off. And it could just be something like that. No pressing. Unless these kids are struggle enough to dribble the ball, they press it, you're just gonna have a turnover game and nobody's gonna score. No double teaming. And later, when we get to the other part of the rules, it talks about um, playing specific man. And we could do something where we do like a color coded wristband and blues with, like blues guarding blue, I've seen that done at YTCAs all the time.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Like, well, it wasn't necessarily like SASSA that had that, but we were signed up through SASSA and the coaches decided to do that. So we did that and it worked pretty well, at least for the pre-K and kindergarten, it worked really well.
I would definitely say for pre-K kindergarten, at least give them some like color coding so that they can see, hey, this is my man. Cause they're gonna see the ball and they're gonna get.
They're gonna do that anyways, but yeah.
It helps out.
But maybe with first and second, it'd still be man marking, but maybe we don't have to do the bands, uh, the colored bands.
I think the band would still be good, because some of them are first time basketball.
So I think that's something where if you guys are okay with it, when I talk to my coaches, we work that one out and see, do you guys just wanna do colored bands or, do we just do all the like, all the numbers are matched up and you guard number one, some, some type of system to like, they know who they're guarding. They can't steal, so dribbling, you can't steal, you can intercept a pass, but you can't steal. So they gotta just kind of sit back and actually defend and let the person, because if you've, especially with the pre-K kindergarten, we're gonna be lucky if they dribble the ball half the time, let alone.
You're gonna be surprised.
I think, well, maybe.
You really are.
I know I've refed basketball for a while and every time I did the little kid games, you'd have at least.
You have dribble.
At the beginning of the season, they'd all be walking, you'd just be like, okay, guys, we gotta dribble. By the end of the season, you'd have half the team that could, could dribble the ball pretty regularly. Obviously, we're not doing college or pro where we would have to do a shot clock or a back, backcourt timeline or even a five second before they're guarded. Those normally don't kick into high school and college, higher.
I don't know if you want this or not, in the past, didn't we do, like you couldn't defend outside of the three point line? That way they can at least pass the ball around, you know?
Cause I was gonna say, they can't pick them up until half court, like defense has to run back to half court at least, let them get it to at least half court. And then like it was at the three point line.
What if you do get some second graders that can shoot threes, they're at their line, nobody's defending them, they shoot it, make it, we don't count it, so what do we do after that?
So two points.
Kind of like the NBA was before the three point line, where everything, it just didn't matter where you shot it from, it was two points, so.
And my only suggestion with these rules is, I mean, we're agreeing on them here and I, I mean, I agree with these rules here, but make sure you have a copy, add this, like a copy for each of your coaches, go over them and if they have any, questions, concerns, or would like to change something, maybe use your discretion, like if it's not something like absurd, like we're saying, like if they say something about the three point line, like, uh, come to an agreement altogether and maybe add that on there so we can put it on.
I think part of this is I just want to show you guys kind of a guideline and then um, at the end, I was gonna say, are you guys good with, if I talk with the coaches, kind of taking some freedom on this?
Absolutely. I think as long as you are in agreement and with the coaches and the coaches are in agreement, then there should not be a problem.
Well, it's gonna be that, it's gonna be all written down where there was discretion.
I think we should have the coaches sign um, a copy of the rules. Because I've heard like three times, like, oh, I didn't get a copy of the rules, so just to make sure we have a cop, like have a copy signed, that would avoid that.
I like that idea. I think I'm gonna have some type of form that they have to sign as a coach anyway, to just be like, hey, I've.
You've received your player.
This is basically saying, I've read over the rules, I've, um, I got my players, I've read over the rules and that way, when we have those issues, we can be like, hey, um, we have it right here in the, so.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Yep. Okay, I am, where was I at? Free throws, it says ten, or clock stoppage, um, any dead ball. We, that would be something I think I wanna talk about the coaches and say, do you guys just wanna do a running clock or do you guys wanna do it every dead ball? Cause especially with little kids, um.
I feel little, I do a running clock for little.
Yeah, I, I feel.
Every dead ball, you're gonna be there all day with every jump ball.
Every go out of bounds, everything, so you're forgetting, you gotta have a running clock.
I would say the only time that I think you should stop that clock is have your ref blow the whistle for subs. Like every, like half of every quarter is what we used to do, so if it was like a seven minute quarter at three thirty, we, he blew the whistle or we caught it, whoever could catch it, stop the clock, let them sub out, start it back in.
I think that's something, I will uh, I like it, I think I'll talk to my coaches, see whether they wanna do that or maybe just do the, the quarter thing. They do the running clock for a quarter and then at the end of the quarter, swap.
I have, just because they're little, the extension length is shorter, so a half will be better for the pre-K.
Oh, a half, okay.
They've been ran off and went on the playground.
Can you say, can you take me out now?
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, I would say make that a like. I would say like half of every quarter, make that like a mandatory thing for pre-K kindergarten and then talk to your coaches, um, about like what you're talking about like quarters for first and second grade, because first and second grade can go longer and most of them will probably want to, play that longer time versus splitting it three and a half minutes, so.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with the running clock because the ball's just, I mean, even you're gonna see so much, people like dribble off their feet or off their knee or something and it's gonna go right out of bounds. I mean, I've, I've refed up to high school and even in some high school games, you see it all the time where the ball just goes out of bounds and your game ends up being twenty, thirty minutes longer than. So yeah, it has down here, either team can substitute during clock stoppage. If we do the half quarters uh, subs for the pre-K K, that would be the one clock stoppage during that quarter, stop the clock. There. For three throws, talked about three offensive players in the lane, three off defensive players, I mean, that's kind of how you line up to a degree.
I don't know that all that even, like.
I don't think that's gonna matter too much. This, yeah, like I said, this did come off of like the USA Basketball NBA website, they're a lot more specific, I think. I think some of this is just gonna be kind of open to interpretation. Um, if you go to the next page, on page two, it talks about player to player defense and kind of gives us a summary of what that is. Each player basically. The summary is that each player is responsible for guarding one player. If we do the color coding system, then they know which player they're supposed to be guarding. And the ref can stop play if we start getting double teamed and to just have the, so offense gets double teamed, ref stops it, takes it out of bounds and just has the offense keep the ball. The rest of this, mainly talking about, a lot of stuff we already covered, the distances and the size of the balls, if you guys can see that in there, um, is there anything on there you want me to cover?
I would like to have something in there for crowd control. For example.
Like a rope or?
No, I'm talking about for a coach, he's responsible for the parents that they're coaching. And the other coach is responsible, so like what happened at that game was totally out of control, you know? That period, that coach should have been gone. I don't care who it was, they should not, they should have been gone immediately as soon as they started cussing. So they have something like that, if it happens again, they cannot come back. We have that where we're playing softball all the time, if you heck us, you're out of there, you can never come back to the yard. That was totally embarrassing, totally embarrassing. I was embarrassed that night for, for that happened.
I think maybe that's something that we put in the coaches' rules that we have them sign.
Yeah.
Not only that, but we had to do that before because we had a parent in town that did the same thing. And she was one that was, she would go after the high school referee kids and chew them out from one end to another. So we had to, my last year, I think it was the girls were kindergarten, I think. We had like, that was part of what director at the time made us as coaches, we had to take this form, read this form out there to them. And then parents had to sign it as well and turn it back into the coach.
Do they still have a, a, some type of parental?
I think the parents should be, yeah, not mostly the coaches, you know, on the coaches, but on the parents. And when we sign up for basketball, that should be one thing they sign is their behavior contract.
Yeah, behavior contract, yeah.
Just throw that into the uh, actual like player packet, some.
I agree.
I just think that would be a smart thing to do, just because as a coach, yes, you are responsible for your parents.
But you can't control.
No, you can't, I mean, you cannot. But with that crowd control too, playing in that elementary gym, yes, we need some type of rope.
Cause we've had some parents.
Cause we've had parents, yeah, come up to the court.
Kindergarten, yeah.
So I.
I haven't seen this court, so I don't know.
Okay, isn't there something that we do sign that is like, that maybe it just needs tweaked or is that it's SASSA?
I would say I think it's tweaked, because I don't.
I don't think with.
There's, there's one, it might be SASSA.
I think it's SASSA.
One or the other, I know I've, I know I have signed.
I think, I've signed SASSA.
That might be something to look at, be on the website.
I might talk to Jared or.
That should be for every sport. I think Tyler, I think Tyler has one too, that he, I'm pretty sure we have to sign it as parents for track hunting with Tyler.
That's probably the one we signed, because I remember, that gets pretty intense.
And we signed one for little league football in Perkins, so.
I just think it covers.
Covers.
Titties.
And everybody else, I really do.
I'll double check to make sure there isn't, if there is or isn't, I can't remember the sign up form off the top of my head right now.
After this past weekend, we had, had our tournament, it was crazy.
Crazy fan at the tournament.
A lot of the ball fields, um, for a couple of them that we've been to this season are doing that if a parent gets um, thrown out, the head coach gets thrown out.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to go that far.
I don't think we should go that far, but they are doing things to try to start controlling it.
They give a warning at least.
Yeah.
But they have a warning.
It could be like a warning for the coach and then if his fans continue to cause problems, maybe like a suspension, game suspension or something like that.
It's not forever, it was just for like that game, but if a parent gets thrown out, the head.
I think the child, yeah.
I think, I think that needs to stick to the parent, not necessarily the coach, because this is a volunteer.
I think their child should be allowed to play.
I think like the parent, the child should not get punished for the parent's behavior.
I don't think, I don't necessarily think the child or the coach, because really, yes, it's on the coach if they can control their fans, but we've all met people that even.
Right, that you can't control. I agree. There are, I mean, there just are a lot of places that are doing different things.
Like controlling five pre-K kids, then you have to control the parent.
Exactly. Yeah, good luck, exactly.
I think like, I think a warrant, depending on the severity of whatever the parent does, one warning maybe, and if it happens again, you can't come back. At least let them, they may, you don't know what they're going through, but at least let them try to correct themselves for future.
Yeah, something we can add on to our next meeting as well, of more of like, talking about this. I think it's something we can add in for this sign up, but add in to another meeting to talk about. Is it a, a ban for a year, is it gonna, like if they get kicked out of, is it the ban for the rest of that sports year or is it the ban for the, until the next sport? I think that's something where we're a little off topic on the basketball part of it.
Sorry.
It, it happens, it happens and we can talk about it with um, as a separate topic that we can put on the next agenda and are, and you got that? She's got it written down, so.
Yeah, I brought it too.
She's right now my favorite person with these meetings. Sorry, guys. So is there anything else that we want to, sorry Megan, I think I'm ticking.
Sorry, I'm all over my job here.
I am so sorry. I realized it and stopped.
I'm kidding. But anyways, I've been good. Alright, uh, number ten, consideration, discussion and possible action regarding possible event for November.
Most of us have talked about, it's this last one and this is not the flyer I'm gonna be going with. I now have gotten that new flyer system where I can make a better one. This was just kind of put together for this meeting. But first off, we talked about maybe doing a, I've talked with a couple of y'all and I know, my hometown, we always did like a five K run around Thanksgiving, um, called Turkey Trot. And so what the thought is, is that we do a five K run in the morning and we do a chili cook off. And, I'll leave the name up to you guys, whether you guys like it on that sheet. You better like it.
I'm kidding, on the record, I'm kidding.
Kind of some event, because I know we've missed a couple of events, that's partially mainly on me. But I think it would be just some kind of event, looking at some of the calendars that um, I kind of asked, I know some of you guys, what, what happens and, because I'm new to the town and looking at the calendar, there's really nothing that happens in November, there's not much. So I think this could be kind of a cool little event that we could do. Um, I actually already have a possible route mapped up. I've talked to Lynn at Maine County Bank, who's the one that organizes the Pistol Pete Run. And um, I haven't had him look at the map yet, but I'm gonna have him look at it, uh, hopefully this week or next week, see what he thinks about the route. And just do some kind of little fun event that's not sports related per se, I mean, there's a run, but it gets people involved with running and eating and it's, I mean, that's, kind of Thanksgiving, I know you always, at least for me, go play football in the morning with the family and then you go eat. And I think that would be a good way to kind of bring two different groups of people, the ones that like to do the cooking and have that fun as well as having the people that wanna, do the race, because I know Pistol Pete race is pretty popular and you have, I can't remember, he told me his numbers. Do the race, cause I know Pistol Pete Race is pretty popular and you have, I can't remember, he told me his numbers on how many he had show up, cause I have talked to him already a little bit. But he had record numbers this year, so I think that interest is in the community. So I guess my, I guess. Discussion guys, what do you guys think of it?
I love this idea. I don't love the five K idea because I, I can't do a five K, but I would gladly do like a mile fun run and die the whole time.
You could do a mile fun run of it too, like mark, mark out a mile of it.
Or do you get a walk?
Or a walk, yeah.
Well, the fun run is like fun as in most people are probably gonna walk it, but if you want to run the.
How do you walk the park?
Then you'll have some adults that I think are gonna be like more serious runners that actually want to. Run and they like doing those, right, I mean, um I know a lot of people, I used to run cross country, I know a lot of people that like still like to do those. Clearly, I don't. I'd probably like the chili part better myself, but um. There are a lot of people that like, like to do those runs and November's a good time. We're starting to cool down. It's not too hot, it's not too cold, maybe. I mean, it is Oklahoma, but we all know that that can change quickly. So I guess, what do you?
Is this something that we can vote on this month or is this just discussion?
I think this is something, we've put action on it. I think this is something if we wanna do, we can take the action and then from there, we can maybe set up some committees to help with different parts of it.
So that day is the uh FFA and 4H um Pork Chop Dinner, starting at five. So it might be something where your chili cook-off, as long as it was like early, I don't know that we want the two to interfere food-wise with each other, cause that's a pretty. Like, it's also a home OSU game, but that's hard to avoid.
Could you, could we, could you maybe combine it? Combine the 4H and the.
Probably not.
Or they can do that.
Yeah, it's, they've done it, I mean, it's already.
So we were originally thinking of doing it the following weekend. The problem with the following weekend is it's bedlam. That OUSU game's gonna be more than probably the home OSU game before that.
I think if we left it. This day, maybe just make sure your cook-off was set to start at like noon, one o'clock latest.
I was wanting to do the run maybe nine o'clock in the morning or ten o'clock, something where we can still get the police department to help maintain traffic. For the runners and probably get one to um lead the race, uh one of the police officers. But it's not at the time where everybody's necessarily up and hustling and bustling around town for the run.
Five? Even, I mean, the, you want your runners to stick around and a lot of times if there's like a lot of gap in between, they don't. A lot of people to stick around, so you've never been to a chili cook-off, to be honest with you, like, I mean, could that be like at like eleven?
Yeah, I feel like we could probably just do it then or.
So it's not too far after?
At the end of the race.
Or like eleven to one or whatever.
Your race ticket gets you in there for, for the, the thing. I did talk to him, he charges about twenty-five for a runner for the race. And then I think maybe we could charge, if he just wanted to come to the chili cook-off, charge like five dollar admissions or something like that.
Five dollars for a whole.
And then we just would have to get, so we, what my thing would be is that we um see who can, if we got other volunteers that can take certain parts of it or. So we would need volunteers for the actual course themselves. Um they're gonna have to stand on corners and basically their job's gonna be, hey, go that way.
Hand of water too. I know they did water stations for the five K.
We could do a water station. So to do this, we would need um, we need to get a good group of volunteers for that. I think we could probably find enough people that wanted to actually compete in the competition for the chili. As well as we would need to find some judges. Um one suggestion that I've heard is the football coach would be a good one. So.
I'd be a great judge.
Hey, I wanna be a fantastic judge too. We could definitely use someone from the red board. I think just kinda maybe get a couple of different areas of people, people in town, like, I mean, most people know the football coach. You're on the board. Um I have, she snuck out. Um I have talked to the mayor, she'd rather compete than eat. So.
I know, this is awful. Okay, so since we're doing an event, I'm like, say, if we're representing the Park and Rec Sport, do we have a shirt? Are we getting a shirt to wear to these events that we're having, like basketball games, softball games?
We could get event shirts, um or we could use, I have yellow official short shirts.
Let's, let's add that to the next meeting, cause I don't like that.
And you're a Park and Rec Board member.
Yeah, because I know he just said, uh, we represent the Park and Rec Board. I don't wanna go up there as me, you know? I have Park and Recs on my shirts. I have an old shirt, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can. I don't necessarily see an issue with that. Not something I thought about before. But yeah, I think we could just get, or we could get shirts that say judges and so they know who the judges are.
I mean, I think, I think it'd be smart for like doing events like this. Again, this is next month thing, but for us to have board member shirts, cause if there is something that get, like a, something happens at an event. You can find our shirts and find us and get a board member there to help de-escalate the situation until the right person gets there, if that makes sense.
That's right. I was thinking that or those like staff shirts, or even the volunteers that are working, we can give them like bright yellow staff shirts. Kinda like you would see at any type of football event or something like that. Like, and that way we can, we can just give those out, take them back, wash them and give them out for the next event. And just anybody that's helping out, give them a staff shirt or event staff shirt. That way, if there's some type of issue, they can hopefully know who to go to, who's the right person for, hey, this person. Has some medical, who do we need to call or something like that.
Um, the only other thing that I would say for this is we need to make, we got the, we need to get judges and then like some type of fun trophy slash award um for age divisions, like different age divisions. And for the chili, uh chili winner, I think we need to do like something bigger for the chili winner, just to make it a big deal.
Yeah, I, I think prizes would be good. I, I, like I said, I kinda threw this flyer together very quickly last minute.
Okay, well then, I'm gonna, if everybody's good with pushing this forward, I mean, we still obviously need to get more details. Do we wanna vote on that list tonight saying, hey, let's go forward with this?
We can't really wait till the next one.
Yeah, I'm saying, cause this.
Next one is.
Next month. It is next month.
Are you, are you gonna do like what's included in the twenty-five dollars?
I think we can do a shirt saying, uh, the fun run and do a shirt for the competitors as well for the chili part of it. And then like.
A run in like a, a t-shirt, I think. Like to run and then like, yeah.
So talking with Lynn, is that something he does? He does like these, he had brighter orange shirts, I think this year for Pistol.
Yeah.
Pistol Pete Run and um, I mean, that's, that would be my thing, is we do a shirt for it for the whole event. And um, basically, I would say if you compete, you get a shirt. If you just do the five dollar entry to do the chili part of it, maybe not, but like the competitors. Get shirts, the judges, like something like that. Um and then I would say we also need to just think about, do we wanna charge the competitor something to enter and then like their prize could be taking home so much of it. Same thing with the runners, like the first place could get. Cash back or something like that, or just do a trophy of some sort.
Trophy would be.
How much did the medal cost for, uh, how much does a medal cost per person?
Uh, about three fifty.
Even if they had a medal and on the back they had. Bull five K run or something.
Yeah, we could do that and just do kinda like.
First, so many.
Yeah. So that's a participation or something.
I don't know about five K's. Most friends that.
Oh, I like that idea.
I've been in races where, like, one was a watermelon run and like, I got a watermelon.
Yeah.
And I got a.
You could just give out, get a nice big turkey and give them out.
That's different, I like that. I'm not running, I'm not that running, but I like.
Yeah, no, I think something like that, I mean, for like the adults for sure, and then like for the kids, I'm sure you could find a themed trophy, like with a little turkey or something on it, you know? Something fun like.
I see pumpkins on here, they can get their own pumpkin in the car, in the car.
Oh, we could just give little kids, like a quail that's a smaller looking turkey. I'm sorry, it's, it's been getting a little bit too serious.
Um, but anyways, no, I think I, I would do like that. And I think like the chili winner, like it should be like some type of like bigger trophy, like bragging rights.
We could find, uh, most trophy places do ribbons and we could do one of those big old like, like the state fair, you get the big old blue ribbon.
Yeah.
That says first. We could even get a first, second, third, get smaller, I'm sure we could find.
I don't know where you, you're doing your awards or whatever, but I know when I talked to B four about the shirts, she can get trophies and awards through her shop as well.
I did not know that because that would have been, normally we go through Trophy Depot, they are closed at the moment. For, cause they're moving or something like that, so we actually had to go up to New Jersey up in Stillwater.
But that might be just something you just kinda check in and see what she, what her prices are. If her prices are way more, then obviously stick with whatever.
I am, and I would prefer to use a local business as well if. I will talk to her about that.
And is this, if it turns out well, can we do this every year?
Oh yeah, I think if it turns out well, it's something we do every year, if it's.
I think you should put, like on the flyer, it should say first annual, just so people know, like this is not just a full loop thing, like we're wanting to make this like a.
I think we can add to it a little bit more. Um one thing I did put on there that um. Courtney had mentioned is she might be able to get some pumpkins from, she knows the people who owns a pumpkin patch around here. Especially considering that's after Halloween, she might be able to get some pumpkins donated and we could even do like pumpkin painting for the kids while the chili cook-off's going on. Something like that. Um and then we could even display those at city hall. Or if we get the small ones, they could take them with them. If, like, we get big ones, if we let them paint on different sides of it, we could just kinda display those at city hall. At this, the little park that's right out here. Um cause we do have some decorations out there, but I think that would be something kinda cool where we could.
Like that.
Kids could come see there or something.
Alright, well, I motion to approve going forward and getting this thing going.
That's a good.
So we'll be working on it and then I guess it's something we'll see um.
So we wanna.
Might be something where I need help on handling certain parts of it.
No, so I was gonna say, if you wanna look at this and get like, give you a list of stuff that we need and just kind of make you little divisions of things, then we can sign up.
Can I need someone that look for volunteers, someone to. I'm gonna talk to Lynn soon and see kinda how he has his, how he gets his volunteers and stuff like that.
We need to take a vote. I'm telling you, we need to take a vote.
She's telling me we need to take.
Yes.
Yes.
Laney, Laney.
Yes.
Marnie.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
J C.
Yes.
Alright, number eleven, or yes, eleven, consideration, discussion and possible action for a city Christmas light competition.
So something that's been done in the past, from what I've been told, is do we want to do some type of city competition for residential and for business, probably do prizes for both. Where they, we, they reach out, they get signed up and then we can maybe put a sign in saying, hey, they're number two in our voting system and then everybody can kinda just vote on which. Which business they like and then do some type of prize for the end of it. That's something that I've heard people liked in the past. They like kinda doing that competition. It got everybody in the Christmas spirit around town, cause people wanted to outdo their neighbor and have more. A better light show.
Businesses festive that year that we did that, like.
In the wind, that's, I think that's when the window paintings started.
That well, in like, that one was like a gingerbread house, Ashton's front of hers, like, I mean, I think it's a good idea.
I think for sure we'll get a lot of businesses that wanna compete in it. Um we just have to, we might.
There's always a lot of homeowners.
I think what would be best for like showing everybody who's competing would just be do a map on like the city website and say, hey. For the businesses, you got one, two, three, I mean downtown, you're gonna have like, you got these businesses downtown, but then you might have like B four or um. Yeah, or the doctor's office up there, I can't remember what it's called. Um but they might wanna compete as well. So we can make a map of showing, hey, this is where number one is, this is where number two is, this is where number three is and go, everybody can go around and kinda just. We just would have to figure out how to do any like voting on it. I think that would be the, for sure, what they did in the past for voting.
Well, I mean, you can post pictures, that's what kinda happened on Facebook, so you'd start an album, every, you'd post, you, you would post or whoever personally, like, post the pictures and then. You could do it by likes, we can create a Google Doc form.
One time, um, we voted at Old Fashioned Country Christmas, like the, it was all given, is that right? I'm pretty sure, I think, this was a few years ago, I think what they did was like all the map and all of that went out before. And so people could drive around and then the actual voting was done at Old Fashioned Country Christmas, they had a picture of each one or something like that. I don't know. If that, that's kinda early too, cause that's like December eighth or fifteenth, that is a little bit early.
I live with the Grinch and a lot of people do too, but uh it's, it's kind of hard to get Christmas lights up.
We may wanna do something. A little bit later than that, otherwise.
But yeah, I think doing something like that and like having your residential, obviously, and then your business.
Yeah, I think for two.
Could we possibly do like a Facebook poll?
Yeah.
One of those polls on Facebook when they can, they can go look at them and then go on Facebook, I like this one, I like, or you could even get people that don't leave the house for Christmas lights. That could sit in there and say, if we have the pictures up there.
Yeah.
I like this one.
Yeah, um and then I think we also did it for, it didn't have to be in town, it was as long as it was a Perkins address. And that's up to how y'all wanna do it, but it was, there were actually some that were not right in city limits that was in it last time.
I think we would definitely need a map for that, but I don't think it's a bad idea, cause I have just found out. Week or two ago from Eric Lowes on how big our city limit is, cause he was talking about a fire thing and I didn't realize we go halfway up of. One seventy-seven all the way up there and you got some neighborhoods up there as well that I don't wanna necessarily, I think, just doing it the city and then if we do put like a map up there. On the city page, we can show, hey. You have a couple more properties, you gotta go look up at, look up out here. I know you got like my point churches out there and you got a couple other businesses as well. That may or may not compete in it and they can go up there and look and.
So you could choose to do Perkins addresses or you could choose to do like Perkins School District or something like that. That would hit some of those others. That goes far, that's really far. That does go really far.
On two.
Yeah, no water.
Yeah, that's too far. I was just thinking some of those neighborhoods between Perkins and Stillwater, they're not Perkins addresses, they're Stillwater addresses.
I think we'd just maybe do Perkins addresses as well. We put that, hey, you gotta, if you have a business, you gotta make sure people, like. You have to be able to make sure people can, like if it is one that may be on the highway, you're gonna have to leave your gate open and have somebody there. Because we don't want people stopping on the highway, they go in and look at your lights and. I don't know if we'll get too many that actually do that, but um I think it's one where it's just like, hey. If you do enter this, realize people are gonna be driving by your house and judging you for it, so. Make it available to, for them to do it and then go from there. Um, anything else on that? You guys wanna vote that we do it?
Yeah, I motion that we do the Perkins Park and Rec.
Light bike.
You can work on that name?
Before we go forward, are we doing anything else considering the like pictures or, you know, like?
I'm sorry, one second. Laney, did you second that? We need to vote on it.
Yeah, let's vote on it then I'll answer.
Megan?
Yes.
Hang on.
Yes.
Laney?
Yes.
Marnie?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
J C?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, is there any other event for that Christmas month, other than just the like competition? Is there a place where we can go?
I mean, you'll have the city, we probably will see if maybe we can run the concessions day in during the old Chris, is it Old Christmas Day? With, that the city uh, Mayor Commerce does.
The Old Fashioned Country.
Old Fashioned Country Christmas, sorry. Old Fashioned Country, sorry.
Somebody does a, uh, I think somebody does like a dinner fundraiser.
Something we can look up and talk about at next meeting too.
Somebody may do a dinner fundraiser at that, but I might be, that was like a long time deal, I'm not sure.
Um, most, I can't tell you most of the lights work up there at the plaza, except for a few strands, and, um, although the numbers are off from the last inventory sheet I had, there's definitely not as much, so it might be something.
So did you need help putting up lights, or, so we can have that going this year? It's kind of on agenda.
I think we could put on the next meeting agenda, um, like a workday for.
Yeah, I think just doing something about a workday, throw on the agenda, would be, how we need to cover that, cause it's not on there.
A workday for.
Christmas lights, getting the Christmas lights put up, so.
So we can have.
So. Other questions?
Next meeting, we should have pizza.
I'll ask Bob.
We should, we should.
I'll ask Bob if he'll let me pay for it, I'll probably get a note, but.
All right, number twelve adjourned.
Only time I've ever heard Dustin second anything in these meetings.
We need to vote on that. Megan?
Oh, yes.
Hang on.
Yes.
Lanay?
Yes.
Marnie?
Yes.
Dustin?
Jacey? Yes.
Uh, thank you guys.
My, uh, basketball comment about high.